There you go. Now I can see bumper.
They had the Shazee meeting on during the weekend.
Say hi bumper.
Yeah, which I had not seen one yet in a very long time.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Open a meeting for Commissary Republic at this time? Anybody wishing to address the board, they do so. There being nobody to address the board, you'll have a chance at the end of the meeting. Minutes of the previous meeting, regular meeting of April 7th and special meeting of April 14th. Board, you all have copies? Is there any addition or deletions?
I think under bills, we're dealing in new... You mentioned that there was a check to C2RT for $5,000? Okay. Maybe you should correct that, that that is not going to be reimbursed through the grant? I don't know if you want to do that now or you want to do it later?
Do that under your report, John.
Okay.
Yeah, except you...
Just make a correction after, I'll do that under your report.
If there are no other corrections at this time, I'm going to entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of the April 7th and minutes of the meeting of April 14th, 2008.
Motion made by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Baker. Is there any discussion? If there is no discussion, all those in favor, vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried, bill. You all have copies of the bill. Thank you. Do we have any additions or deletions?
No.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to pay the bills today.
Second.
Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Bertsch. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Oh, I'm sorry, correspondence. I'm reading them.
The first, excuse me, is from the American Legion Auxiliary of Rouse's Point. We'd like the village of Rouse's Point to grant us permission to sell poppies. These poppies will be sold at different locations. The employees at Wyatt are one of our large contributors. Therefore, your permission would be greatly appreciated. Thank you for your cooperation concerning this matter. Anne Kettig, Secretary for the Rouse's Point American Legion Auxiliary.
Need a motion to allow that?
I'll make a motion to allow the Legion Auxiliary to sell poppies this year.
I'll second. Moved by trustee Penfield, seconded by trustee Baker. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
The second I have is from Montgomery Hall's Hook and Ladder. The mayor and trustees, please be advised that our annual election of officers held April 1st, 2008, the following members were elected by our membership to serve as chiefs until April of 2009. We submit their names for your approval. Chief Michael Blough, First Assistant Chief Walt Larney, Second Assistant Chief John Hamon. Thank you for your consideration of these members. Sean Cheyman, Secretary.
Need a motion to accept the names? Make a motion to accept the names as provided by the Montgomery Hall's Hook and Ladder Company.
I'll second that. Moved by trustee Bertsch, seconded by trustee Jefferson. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
The next letter I have is, "I am required by law to inform you that I am renewing my liquor license for dollars allowed. This was set to be certified." That's Marie Wall.
That's for informational link.
And the next item I've received was from the Northern New York Library Network, Plitton and Essot Counties Documentary Heritage Program Regional Groundtable. Interpretive use of collections is going to be held Saturday, May 10th, 2008, at the Samuel D. Champlain History Center in Elm Street in Champlain. And they're just asking if anybody wishes to attend, you have to register that.
Does anybody know where that is?
It's waiting for a can of diesel.
Yeah. What about Donna? Would she be interested, or maybe Jerry Favreau? Let them know.
It's free of charge, you just got to register.
And that's all I have.
Oh, thank you ma'am.
Should we pass that information along to them, or?
I could do that.
Okay.
Okay. The report of the mayor and the water trustees on the agenda, my agenda item number one, you all have some pictures of towers. And we have to make a decision whether or not we're going to go with a tower or not at all. Because the water department definitely does not want them to put antennas on the water tank. Because what has to go through? They cannot just attach them, they have to load brackets on for the tank. And they're just afraid that they will interrupt the coating on the inside when they load on the tank. They don't want to take that chance. And the other thing is, all the cables would have to run on the outside with that. I have no objection, there's pictures of the towers, I have no objection to these towers. First of all, it's in a commercial, industrial area. And it's not, you know, if we can do it, we'll get the same rent. We'll still get $1,500 a month.
Is that the only place in the village where it would be suitable to have a tower? Is there any other place?
Ah, they haven't looked at it, but this is to them the preferable place because it's in an industrial area. There'll be no home filter around there. And it'll be up next to the railroad tracks. That's my... Like I said, talk with Doug, talk with the water, Gary. And they definitely feel that this is the best way to go. And if somebody else wants to come in, put antennas on there, we'll get another $1,500 a month.
Have they investigated, this is Verizon, right?
Yeah.
Have they investigated any areas outside the village?
I don't think so.
Could we make a suggestion that they do that?
We can make it, that suggestion. I don't know the reason why they picked this area. I mean, they didn't tell us why. I do know that location, a location is important where you put those antennas. If you don't know, cellular phone service in this village is next to none. You got it and you don't have it. You got it and you don't have it.
Oh, hi, is the tower going to be yours on top of the water?
Oh, no, it's not on the top of the water tower, it's on the ground.
On the ground, alright.
Okay. On the ground, just like what you see in the second picture, or the first picture, you got that little building?
How much higher than the existing towers?
I think it's about Saint Mike. These are not... I'll tell you where, I've looked at several of these towers on the way to Syracuse. They've got this type of... It's not the ones that are guided, you know, the high, high, high...
I was just wondering, because originally, maybe they looked at Rouse's Point because we had the tank and they wanted to use the height from the tank?
Yeah.
And now they want to do it independently, or they have to do it independently and have a tower?
Yeah.
I just wonder how.
The way I look at it, if we want cell service here, we certainly have to, we certainly are going to have to do something.
Well, our cell service is not nonexistent though.
I didn't say nonexistent.
Right.
It's spotted.
And the purpose of improving the cell service is for the residents of the community?
I would say everybody, anybody.
Anybody.
If you, like I've got an Excel phone, it's a village has. If I get on the bridge, right? I'm into Canada.
Right.
And that costs money. So you don't use it.
Well, then you don't use it on the bridge.
Yeah, you don't use it on the bridge. And then you get down from the bridge, and you get down here, and it's gone. And you move over here, and then we're hitting the Champlain Tower again. If you move up over here, I'm hitting next, next tower again.
Great, but you could get to a landlot by the time you're down here.
You could be.
You could go to the village if it's village business, or if it's personal?
Yeah, myself, or how about a stranger? There's no payphones anymore.
Well, that's true, but...
The phone company says they don't make any money on them, so they take them all out.
Well, how about the location up by the water treatment plant? That's kind of like...
You know, the wastewater plant?
Yeah.
I don't know. I mean, we have to make a decision whether we want them to come in here or not, period. And definitely to look at.
I really feel they need to look at locations outside of the village.
Well...
And certainly I think...
They may not want to do that because of power.
Well, they may not want to do that because of power, but that doesn't mean that we then need to accommodate them because they choose not to investigate.
We're not accommodating, Kelly, we're getting $1,500 a month rent.
Which, quite honestly, okay. Do we need it that badly?
Well, I'm not saying we do, but just, you know, you don't turn a gift horse down.
But it's not a gift horse, because they would be erecting a tower in the village limits. Have we heard from the residents on how the residents feel about this? The people who live across the street from where the water tower is? The people who live in the vicinity? I mean, they, if they haven't investigated any other places, I view it as we're accommodating them by opening the door. And certainly, putting up a tower for Verizon doesn't...
We're not putting it up, they are.
Agreeing to, I mean, whose land are they going to be using?
That's why they're giving us $1,500 a month.
Well, so we're allowing them to put up a tower.
Yeah.
Right? If it's on our land? I just personally have a lot of misgivings about it. I understand cell service is not as desirable, or not as, you know, strong here as it is in other places, but I also feel that they should investigate other locations outside of the village.
Now, they have a tower right in Champlain.
Well, there you go, there's your tower then.
But I'm telling you, it shoots right over the village. That's why they're looking for a tower here.
Well, I wouldn't be, firstly, I wouldn't be against it at this juncture, but I would like to investigate what it would be like by the waste treatment plant.
That's a bad idea.
You know, instead of being up there, because there is a tower on the line of the dump.
Yeah.
Right? It's a different type of tower.
Yeah, it's a microwave tower.
It's not really that noticeable if it's up there. It would be unadvisable.
I'll call him tomorrow and donut, you know.
Will be?
I don't know the reason why, or maybe that's, we need an explanation.
Could they come and speak to the whole board so we can get our questions answered?
Sure, probably could.
That might not be a bad idea. I'd like to hear at least what they have to say in terms of the choice of the location. Because I also am concerned that if, you know, if we, if we allow village land to be used in this manner, where does it stop? I guess is my other question.
We, they're doing it all over. They got them, you know...
Well, Rouse's Point isn't all over. Rouse's Point is what we are in charge of.
Yeah.
And so, all over is not Rouse's Point. So, and I don't necessarily agree with the fact that they're doing things elsewhere if we need to be doing them here. It should be good for the village, I think, but that's just how I feel.
Well, and the other thing we should probably know is if they, if they do, let's say we did agree to let them construct a tower, if there were other additions to the tower, who would get the rent and what kind of control?
We do, you already told me that.
So you think that they would expand and put other?
If Nextel or one of the other companies want to come in and put their antennas on it, that's fine, but we still get the same amount, we get $1,500 for any company that comes in here.
Well, something, I think we should investigate it further.
See, the big thing we were looking at was that, that $1,500 a month, you know, it's a few thousand dollars, would go into a fund for the upkeep or maintenance of the water tank. Because the water pump was hurting. That's what was, why we, you know, we were talking about the antennas on the water tank. Like, we put that into, set that aside as a maintenance factor, because about every 10 years, they're going to have to poke the inside of that tower.
What, could you do that with a standalone tower?
Yeah.
I still, I, I don't know.
I will call him tomorrow and tell him that there's a wish, and maybe they'll come to board me. I know they'd like to get this settled because they've got a lot of engineering to do.
Well, I'm sure they do, but you know what? That's, quite honestly, their issue on towers.
Yeah, but we've been putting them off for several months.
Well, we didn't know, we didn't know, it was, first we thought it was going to be on the water tower, which probably wouldn't make it as visible, now it's going to be a standalone tower. I'd like to see.
Well, they came up and they looked, they had sent all our engineers up here, and they looked at the water tower, and then I had Dougie up here, and I had Gary, and then there was all kinds of issues. Number one, they said they wanted a six-inch hole up through the cauldron, put their cable stuff up, and Gary said, "No, that's not acceptable." And then they said, "Well, we'll walk the outside," and he said, "Oh, no, that's not acceptable."
Yeah, I'm sorry, maybe they can find a different location in the village, just like that, that location.
They may have reasons for that location, I don't know.
They'll explain it.
You know, let's hear what they are, I guess, is what I would say.
Alright. I will call Joe tomorrow and take that one down. Okay, update on the semi-annual municipal electric conference I attended last week. There's a lot of issues with electricity. There's a lot of issues with the ISO. It seemed that that dominated the conference, all these charges. If this board remembers, or you probably don't, several years ago at the mayor's conference, when the chairman of the Public Service Commission got up and said, "The deregulation of power is going to be the best thing that ever happened to the customer." I took her to task, and I said then, "It's the worst thing that's going to happen to the customers, just like everything else that this country is deregulated." It certainly is, and it's come in the past. They forced all the independent operators, like New York and State Electric and Gas, and National Grid, and all these people, the seller generation. They had to sell all their plants, even the power plant, they had to sell their two nuclear plants up in the middle of the state. Became private, and now these people are called independent system operators, and they're doing just exactly what they want. I understand the CoGen, CoGen plant, Flatsburg, is going to be shutting down and only make electricity at peak times. And you know why they want to do that? At peak times, they get more money for it. It's going to be interesting. That's basically what went on. And then I have to go this week to NIPA because we have two, two systems that want to add enormous amount of load that would cause everybody else to pay for it, and we're just, I think the body's going to vote. If they want to add this, it's fine, we can pick up the load, but they'll have to pay for it if it costs themselves, not, not the rest of us. It's going to, that's going to be a real fight, that one, I think. And that's what went on. Okay, the 99th Annual on NICOM Conference, a conference of mayors in Saratoga Springs, it will be held June 8th through 11th at the Gideon Putman. Is there anybody interested in going? Because if you want to stay at the Gideon, you want to get your reservations in now. I can't go. June, I'd like to walk through it. I know I will be going.
I don't know how to walk.
Can we use the phone, Charlie?
I'll wait, I'm pretty good with me.
Yeah, that's Sunday the 8th through the 11th. That's, that's a good week for me. I go to, I go down there, and then I go on the 11th, they go from this meeting to another meeting in New York State Chiefs, until the following Sunday. I'll be home gone for a whole week, from Sunday to Sunday.
Are you going, you're going to this?
Yes.
You are, okay.
Right.
Yeah. I'll be in Ottawa.
Want a motion, George, and you go?
You have to.
Got to make a motion to allow the mayor to attend the 99th Annual NICOM Meeting in Saratoga Springs.
Second, you want to make it available for still, you want to go, Frank?
No.
I can't, I got school, I can't.
I can't go yet, I've got too much in June.
I'd love to go, but I can't.
It's a good conundrum.
The motion been made and seconded, any of discussion? If there's no discussion, all those in favor, vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
That's only for one?
One, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, next thing on my agenda, discussion compost brush pile. Every year, we seem to have the same, same, same argument, or not argument, discussion. And that is, people abuse this, to go in. I kept an eye on it this weekend, I went out several times. We say leaves and brush so big, we find everything. Not that this weekend, but just to keep your heads up. If you, if we're going to continue this, we need to keep our closer eye on it. If you don't know what's going on with the state of New York, the DEC wants to stop all outdoor burning, period, in the whole state. Excuse me. And if that happens, we'll probably have to close that. We're starting to run out of room up there.
We don't have a...
Yes, we do have a chipper.
A chipper, a mulcher?
Yes, we have a chipper.
To make compost?
Yeah.
Is there any, is there any way that we can turn that into something that...
I don't know, I don't, I think we're going to find a lot more we can chew there, John.
It would be alright if we went through the spring and the fall pickup curbside with the chipper.
Right.
But when they bring it down there, it's all twisted and matted, and for the main hours that you're going to take to untangle it and push it through the machine, you're talking days and days.
Be quite a mess.
A lot of times, they dump stuff that they're not supposed to. I mean, our chipper can only take up to, I think, three or five inch logs, and we found big pieces of wood in there.
I could have found lumber, two by sixes, two by eights, kitchen cabinets, tin cans.
Pallets.
Pallets.
You clean up your yard, and then you have this, I went through that this weekend, sorry, I want to clean up my yard, you know, springs here, and then you think, well, of course you have a little construction a couple of years ago, and then you always swear that you're going to burn, that you never really, because you're going to put in your fireplace or your wood stove, and you're going to burn it up, and all of a sudden the fire keeps getting way to way.
The thing is...
Brian was over there, I say, "Brian, you think, is it possible to bring some more?" I mean, just little pieces, like you said, little pieces of two by four here and everything. Next thing, you know, somebody's going to be here, and you see here, two, a couple pieces, and everybody else is going to bring something, then it's going to be a garbage then.
Well, that's, that's the problem, that's when you get two or three pieces in there, you have the DEC come up and say, "Oh, you're accepting this stuff, and you're in this, this is a landfill now, so now we're going to find you."
Yeah.
So...
It's going to be a...
It's, 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 it's a very nice thing for the residents, but boy, for some reason or another, they sure attract people from everywhere it helps. We have them from Champlain, Roar, Shazee.
They think it's a shared service.
Well, I could be. Anyway, I think you just brought it up, I think, you got to keep an eye on it. Things get bad again, and we'll shut it down completely. We can't afford to get fined, and we can't afford to take care of all that junk, because then we have to haul it to the landfill. Okay, Landmark Tank Company will be here, I think it's the 15th of May. The water tank will be going offline, we'll be on serpentine piping, they'll recoding the inside of that water tank. That's for everybody's notice.
It's in 1990, or 1991?
19... Okay. Yes. So, there will be a letter in the, in the press, news release, and letters have been sent out to the fire department, to the major corporations, what's going on. Okay, that's it for me, Brian.
Trustee Jefferson, George, would you know, just a breakfast for this weekend, the farmer's breakfast, is it this weekend?
Yes. Yes, Sunday, the semi-annual fire department breakfast from 8 o'clock till noon. I don't know what the prices are set there on here, but if you've never been, you're missing a wonderful, wonderful breakfast. We hear nothing but good things from everybody about it.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor Rivers. The only thing I have on my agenda tonight is the spring cleanup days for the village of Rouse's Point will commence on May 5th, 2008, and it will continue through Thursday, May 8th. Residents are requested to bag as much of the material as possible and place it curbside by 7:30 in the morning, in such a position so that parked cars do not block the pickup truck. This would greatly facilitate the collection, and residents are reminded that this collection is for the pickup of bag clippings and leaves only. And that's all I have on my agenda today.
Oh, thank you, trustee Jefferson, trustee Bertsch?
No.
No. No, I turned the page and there was nothing there, the trustee got there.
I have three items, actually.
Oh, wow.
The first item I have is to request an executive session to discuss public works personnel.
Second. Okay, moved by trustee Penfield, seconded by trustee Jefferson, roll call, vote, trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
Trustee Bertsch.
Aye.
Trustee Baker.
Aye.
And the mayor goes, aye.
And the other two items I have tonight are actually items that were brought to me by residents of the village. We had about a year and a half ago discussed the idea, the first one, of a neighborhood watch. And I was approached by a resident who was wondering whether or not we had ever decided to do that, or whether or not we could look at maybe more formally putting together a neighborhood watch program with the village. And I wanted to bring it to the board's attention to see whether or not there was any interest. And I think especially with the nice spring weather having arrived so early this year, it might not be a bad idea to look into a more formal program for this. I don't think that, you know, certainly could hurt to do that, and I don't know what, what does everyone else think.
Get Mike involved in that.
Yeah, I thought we could...
We had, we had started that, I want to say, at least two or three years ago.
Yeah, I think it was a couple of summers ago, and we tossed around the idea, but, and I think that's why the person was actually contacting me about it, to see whether or not we had decided to formally go through with it. It just seems like this might be a good time in terms of, you know, some of the, you know, the good summer weather and just making sure that we're keeping an eye on our neighborhoods.
Project for the place to park.
Okay, so, we'll get that taken care of. And then the second item that I had was also something for the board to consider, it was also approached by a village resident, having to do with perhaps getting some of our young people in the village involved in doing community service projects. Some of the students, for a particular reason, either at school or through their church, are required to give service to their community. And this lady was asking me whether or not it would be something that we could do, probably similar to when we did the beach cleanup, whether we could use them as volunteers, and we wouldn't obviously pay them, but maybe we could just recognize them with some sort of a certificate or something that Carol could print out on her computer, so that they would be able to provide a service to their community through something that would just benefit them as people as opposed to working for pay. And she was willing to work with the village to put together a list of people, and to, you know, when we do a beach cleanup or we do something like that, to be in contact with the young people to help them get organized. What do you think about that? Because the other thing that I thought might be useful as well is, we have a lot of people in the village, for whatever reason, whether, you know, are unable, let's say, at this time of year to clean up their yards or what have you, if, even if we could have a list of names of, you know, people who are willing to volunteer and help people out, and they do that in other, other aspects, sometimes with snow shoveling and that sort of thing, but even this time of year, I think it would be very beneficial, so, is that something that we might be interested in doing?
I know with the library, we had Tom Bayshardson come with an English cop there to help out at the library, and for some hours for his...
Night vatch.
Yeah. And the idea is they're getting back to their community without having to be paid for it, which I think is a very valuable activity for them, so...
Yeah, it's a great idea, it's great.
Okay, so I'll put that on my list as well, and see what we can do getting that organized as well.
Alright, great idea. Spring.
That's right. Spring has sprung.
Spring has sprung.
And that's all I have.
Thank you, Trusty Penfield. Trusty Berts.
I have a couple items. I see that the former Anchorage Restaurant, there was a notice, a letter by Mickey Petro to the owner, Mr. Patel. I think you all have copies of it. I don't know as if, in speaking with Mickey Petro, Mr. Petro, our road enforcement officer, as if Mr. Patel is able to start his cleanup because of insurance, of insurance investigation. Maybe he hasn't been given the okay yet. Mike's gonna continue to look into that and try to get a specific time, or maybe even communication with the insurance company and see what the hold up there. He's working on it.
Do you want to take any action on this?
Well, do we want to take any action before we really know whether or not he's...
Well, I think, I think, I think we need to take action to the effect that we give him a timeline.
Because Mike is asking about his letter.
Yeah. Exactly, it's a timeline.
We'll give him a timeline?
It says, we, you know, it says, we have to make a motion for Mike to proceed with, to determine a timeframe, either thirty days, sixty days, or whatever, to at least get started cleaning it out. Sorry, we would like to see it cleaned up before the fourth.
I'll make a motion for the, Mike to give him thirty days' notice to start decleaning, or if not, have some writing from whatever company that's insuring them.
Or he used to go to the next step.
Give him thirty days and then... Yeah, give him thirty days and ask if it takes longer. Ask him up on something.
If you give him sixty, he's gonna take sixty.
Yeah.
We give him thirty, then we can...
Give him thirty days, and maybe he can back it up with some letter from the insurance company. I'd be more happy to do it, but they're not allowing it. At least we can communicate with somebody for whatever reason, and tell them and say, "Can't do it."
I'd say give him thirty days.
Thirty days, I'll make a motion to have Mike Petro proceed with the letter to give Mr. Patel thirty days. Thirty days or some comparable explanation as to why he hasn't started cleaning up the property.
At twenty-six months now. I know, insurance is about to tackle that.
I think we should give him thirty days to get it removed.
Thirty days to get it removed.
Otherwise, all you're gonna get is a letter that says, "I'm not gonna remove it because..."
Well, we'd have, he'd have to back it up with a letter from the insurance company. So we give him thirty days and he can't do it.
John, did you read the, did you read the letter that was sent out February 26th? And he had asked us back then for a letter to, so that he could go to the insurance company saying, you know... And that letter was sent on the 26th of February. And now it is the 21st of April, and nothing is done. So I think it's now the time, excuse the expression, put the hammer down.
So you want to do less than thirty days?
Nope, we, the minimum is, you know, the minimum we go is thirty days. Thirty days, you've gotta have this in progress. Period. End of conversation, Red Lander would say.
So I'll make a motion then.
A thirty day notice to start to clean up or to have everything cleaned up?
I have it cleaned up in thirty days.
I'll second that.
Moved by Trusty Berts. Seconded by Trusty Jefferson.
Not hitting himself?
He's peeping, peeping over here. It's our end of discussion. There is no discussion, all votes in favor, both may use a sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
Second thing I'd, I have on my agenda, discussion of speed tables, but I think I'll wait until the police chief gets back. And if we, you've all had copies of them, and I need to have three quotes. So I only have one so far, so if, if the board makes his agreeable that I go ahead and try to see what the best price is, and maybe, I'm thinking three tables that are probably eight feet in length. So instead of just a hump on Mount Henry Street, it would be more like, you know, an eight foot rise over, so for boats and with trailers that are gonna be going down there, it won't be such a lot.
You see what it says at the bottom of this thing? If you buy one, one at ninety-six inches in length, you're diverting thirteen to fourteen tires out of the landfill.
They're made of rubber.
There you go, so we're going green in the village?
Well, no, I know, and I think it's black, black rubber.
They're shaving. And they can be taken out in the fall. We'll start with the three and we'll see if we get some other prices.
Yeah, because they think you're absolutely right. There's a speedway down there now.
And, and you know, now that the weather's getting a little nicer and people are starting to walk, and once we get the sidewalk finished on the east side of the market, people will be walking, and a lot of kids will be riding their bikes and probably skateboarding and everything else. So I definitely want to slow traffic down. We don't want anyone getting injured. Or any other question about it.
Oh, ready?
Ready. Okay, and property maintenance law. Generally tells me that we discussed this last board meeting. Are we gonna take action on that law this, this evening, or do we want to discuss it some more?
Well, we have, the only thing that has to be taken out there as far as I'm concerned is the purpose and intent, C1 and C4. I think it should be all areas.
I agree.
I know, is that...
I agree.
And as the, other than that, I think it's, it's, it's ready to go. I don't know what anybody else has done, yes.
But I've read it a couple of times.
There's just around, so if we're gonna go ahead with it, then we need to make a motion to go out to, for a public hearing on this law.
I have to say that.
I know, it's gotta go to town, but we still can make the motion, go to public hearing.
Do you need to include that change, doors in motion or not?
No, I think we can just take, you just, you just take out the purposes of law of vacant parcels of land in C1, C4, in all zoned areas, just take it out.
All zoned areas.
Whatever.
Let Tom Hill go on.
Tom, wherever you're going with me.
They're not restricted to C1 and C4.
So, somebody want to make a motion?
Make a motion to have the local maintenance lodge, property lodge on, you want to make a motion to go to public hearing? Go to public hearing.
And Carol can set that up. Second. Moved by Trusty Berts, seconded by Trusty Jefferson, is there any other discussion? Not, if not, all of the candidates, all you should sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
And the other thing, getting back to your, attended a meeting with the shared services regarding the $5,000, well, it's actually $10,000, that was supposed to, supposed to be, have been a member item from Senator Little's office. However, she explained at the last meeting we had, and it was the same meeting that they had, the Republican Dinner, to Towne Champlain, she met with us beforehand. And she notified us that we cannot use that money, so we will have to be donating, or we will have to spend $10,000 for this shared services grant that we're looking for for the infrastructure of the water and sewers for the Towne Champlain, inclusive of the Village of Champlain and the Village of Rouse's Point. So, I know we've spoken about this at length, and I think our board had agreed in the beginning initially, before the...
Two, two years ago.
Right, a bit a little, before she had offered us this member item money. So I think that we're still in agreement that we will go ahead and give the $10,000, and it will not come back from us from a big grant. But we will, in these shared services, we will be able to use that money for other operating expenses.
Was she gonna give it to us? Why don't we, why don't we say, "Well, we're gonna do $10,000 with the sidewalk, and it'd be nice to have the grant."
Well, it may, it may be less if the, once they do the study.
No, no, John, you don't, you, you missed my point. I'm lucky to get the ten grand.
I bet she said you were gonna reword that.
They were. So we could use it to, for the operating expenses.
Yeah, to get that money.
Right. I mean, there's different ways they could, they could use it to pay different salaries for Mickey and...
I was looking, so that we would get it, and then to give them the ten grand, so it would be a wash.
But if, let's say we don't use all of the $300,000 in the grant, then maybe our percentage would be less, you know, to do the study.
But it is possible, like, we could recoup some of that money through payment of, say, Mike's salary.
Right, absolutely.
Okay, so...
Oh, yeah, because there's, there's Mike Petro, who's a coordinator, who's a officer, who's the chairperson, and then there's Lena, who's been a secretary, so she could be, it could offset the village cost. And we'd take ours from Mickey and offset ours, our cost. But I think it would work out, right? And that's it, the only other thing I had, and it's kind of unfortunate, it's the swimming program this year with the town. The Northeastern Clinton is closing their pool down, and everybody's been notified. The village, apparently, some of the people that would be able to utilize, Shaysie Central has offered their pool when their kids aren't using it. And I just found out from Jane West at the town today that they're, it's only used in Shaysie on Tuesdays and Thursdays. So Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, the pool would be available for our kids. Now, our kids in the Northeastern Clinton district would be Towne Moore's, Towne Champlain, inclusive of the Village of Champlain, and the Village of Rouse's Point. But it's gonna cost us a little extra on fuel this year because there's, I guess there's only one bus, one driver. And before, the driver would take all the kids from Moore's, bring them to Northeastern, they would have their program, then they would come and pick up the rest of the kids, then they'd pick them back, and that's how they'd coordinate. And it wasn't so expensive. But now, it appears that if you travel all the way from Canada Corners, the Towne Moore's isn't certain that they're gonna be in the program, so it may end up being just the Towne Champlain, inclusive of the Village, the two villages. But we don't, we don't have a definite cost right now, and we don't have definite time. So the girl that's running the program should be getting that. And hopefully, we'll be able to have one. Because it also was coordinated with the art program that they had, and apparently there was some other swimming programs that they had, to get kids to the town. And I would suggest that if it ends up just being our village and the kids, I'd, I'd like to see your program continue. I'd hate to see the kids miss out on the swimming program. I think it's very important that they, especially the younger kids, all get a chance to learn how to swim with the appropriate life, you know, the lifeguards that are there and teach them correctly. Anyway, I'll give you an update, and that's it.
Thank you, John. Trusty Baker.
The only thing I got is I had one person asking, he would like to see a parking lot between Batha's house and Rico's.
It's all, that's in the works.
That's in the works, okay.
I don't know, I think it's next year, isn't it, Melissa? Next year.
Next year. And the only other thing I have is they, I guess they got Way Avenue, I'll cut in today. What about the thing for Melissa to go to?
Melissa's traveling.
Oh, just make a motion? All right, I make a motion to authorize Melissa to travel. She's her day, it would be in Washington.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Trusty Baker, seconded by Trusty Jefferson, is ending this discussion.
I noticed the reason for her going is going to help us with the Deanage Railroad, a project that we got, that's ongoing, so it's well worth the trip.
Absolutely, she went last year. We were third on our list of the county, which is good, excellent. And I think if he's contacted, you know, she meets with Senator Clinton, Senator Schumer, and down the queue, and I think that's excellent, if we can get some federal money for that station. I think Melissa's gonna have a little report to make on that just a little later on. Okay, is that it? No other discussion, all votes in favor, both may use a sign of aye. All right? Those opposed, motion carried. Is that it, Trusty Baker?
I just, is the presentation for the Historical Society this weekend for the river, or is that next weekend?
It's the 30th.
The 30th, okay. I just wanted to mention that, because, you know, we'll try to go to, it's next week.
With that, Carol?
I have nothing.
Becky?
I have two press releases that went out last week. One was, any unpaid water in sewer that is not paid by April 30th will be added onto the village taxes. And the second one is, May is reconciliation month for budget customers who are on the budget, and the new budget's starting to shoot.
Thank you, Brian?
Yes, I have a couple things. We discussed last winter about repairing the hedges at Mrs. Bombier's.
Yes.
She called me, or she left me a message last week when I was out of town and wondering what was going on. And I would just like to get permission from the board to go ahead with Jay Montferris Nursery for $1,236. That was the only quote we, we received. We didn't receive one from Green Thumb. We just didn't, but, oh, yeah, I said it was probably. But apparently, we need to, we agreed to repair her hedge. I just want permission to go ahead and appeal.
What, that motion, or?
Yep.
I'll make a motion to allocate the money to fix Mr. and Mrs. Bombier's cedar hedge that was destroyed.
Then it's like, Trusty Jefferson, seconded by Trusty Baker. Any discussion? Have any other discussion, all votes in favor? Aye. Those opposed, motion carried. Is that it?
No, my next thing. The guy's been out sweeping up the sand. We have an attachment that goes on our skid steer. It's called a sweepster dustpan, where one room takes the bulk of the material, puts it out in the road. The second room comes up behind him, and it sweeps it up into the bucket. Today, our second machine, the sweep, the sweeper dustpan, actually, the hydraulic pump came apart and the whole gear mechanism. And they're looking to have roughly, we priced out some parts for it, and it was $2,100 in parts to repair the ten-year-old sweepster bucket. We call it the Jack Dragoon, is the one that we bought the bucket from. He has a demo model up there that we can buy for $3,000. But he uses it around the yard. But he has a brand-new machine up there, and a brand-new one is $7,500. He's willing to sell it to the village for $4,500. And if we wait for the parts for the old ten-year machine, it's almost two weeks out. But in those two weeks, that won't be delayed under sweeping. And you want to put that much money into an old machine? I was kind of wishing our son was here to see if we have any money left over in vehicle maintenance or in the skid steer repairs, which I'm sure we do, but... I, I'd just like to see if we can probably give up something in the budget to purchase this new piece of...
You don't have to.
Yep. And we need to do it, so, I mean, it'd be better if you were to... I would like to go look at the demo model to see if it's in the same condition as ours, but... or the new one. But it wouldn't... it would not exceed more than forty-five hundred dollars to put us back in a sweeping mode where it should last another ten years.
Four hundred and fifty dollars a year here.
Yeah.
Nine dollars for the week, so.
Gotta have it, right? So I would make a motion to go ahead and purchase the... go look at it, see if, you know, whatever you think that you can allow them up to forty-five hundred dollars to spend.
Whatever the hottest deal is.
I know they were sweeping up the storm, and they were in front of my house all day.
Yeah, it's dusty.
Well, they were working on that machine last week when you guys were dying it. It blew it up a little. It's worn out.
It's a...
Weird.
It is a high-maintenance machine.
Yeah.
You know, you have a lot of moving parts, and they do break down.
It's a lot of weight, too. A lot of sand is heavy.
Well, it's gritty, you know, it wears like sandpaper.
I have a motion, need a second.
Second.
Okay. Moved by Trustee Burks, seconded by Trustee Jefferson. Any discussion?
So you'll see what you can find in the other budget accounts?
Yes. I'll meet with our son in the morning. Hopefully, you'll...
Okay.
We can sit down and see, make sure that we do have funds available. That's not gonna hurt us until our new budget comes into effect during first.
Right. Okay.
Any other discussion?
If that doesn't happen, you'll have to get that raised... the bicycle wheels with the broom.
Yeah.
A couple of guys out there and do the streets.
We have a good method of the way we do it. It's kind of like cleaning the edges of the road, a little piece of the grass area, and it pushes... with the two machines, it works very well. Then the big sweeper comes up behind and picks up all the fine stuff, theoretically.
Any other discussion? Done, all votes in favor, both my users sign of aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. All right. Now, one more again?
More again. It's not a money issue. Um, just to talk about what Trustee Baker was reporting down tonight about White Avenue. The electric department went up today, and they cut over White Avenue. It's on the underground now. Tomorrow morning, we're scheduled to do Pearl Street, so we're shutting people's power off for a couple hours. They all have notices. We let them know last Friday that we were gonna shut the power off and cut these two streets over. But by the end of... by Friday, all the equipment will be out of the air, and those streets will be energized on the underground.
Excellent. Excellent. That's great.
Then we can get the poles pulled, and they'll look nice.
Very good.
Excellent. That it, Brian?
That's all I have.
Thank you very much, opening a meeting to the public this time. Melissa's public.
Oh. I'm not quite sure how to take that.
She used to be on the agenda, but now she's public.
Well, I am. Actually, I wanted to start off by complimenting Superdented Polk and the electric department on the fine work they did installing those streetlights on Montgomery Street. I hope you're having the same experience. I am everywhere I go in the village. People are saying how nice it looks, and they really... it's fantastic. It's better than I think we could have dreamed of when we planned it. So it's really nice to get that kind of positive feedback. The guys did a great job.
I have a variety of things to run through with you. I'll try to move along as quickly as I can, but they're just things I need you to either know about quickly or give me, hopefully, a quick okay on so we can just keep moving all these projects forward. The first thing is, just to let you know, we have a couple of grants that are due to expire at the end of December. And if you remember, when we sat down in February, I put on a spreadsheet all the grants and when they expire and did a timeline for all the different tasks. But the two thousand and five EPF, which is the one that's funding the codes review and the waterfront cleanup and the work on Montgomery Street. That one's due to expire at the end of this year, along with our basin program waterfront cleanup money. So I just wanted to give the board a heads up on that. We certainly can ask for an extension of the oh-five EPF from the Department of State. That will not be a problem. I believe plans to get Montgomery Street done this year, this season, so I'm not worried about that. But the codes review process may extend, I would say, very likely into the next year. So I was hoping we could maybe sketch out a timeline so that I can ask for an extension for you on that one. And then the waterfront cleanup. This was the plan to pull the tires out of the lake, and we got funding both from the Department of State and from the Lake Champlain Basin Program. As I said, the Department of State grant, I don't think there's a problem extending that. They work with us all the time. They know we're working along through our project. The basin program, I think that if we're not gonna use the money this season, we should probably thank them and tell them that we need to close the grant out because we've been extending this one now for a couple of years. Haven't done anything since July oh-six, when we did that beach cleanup. So I think just to keep the village's record looking good with them, we should either use it, or we should say, "Thank you. We're not gonna do that activity and give it back." That would be my recommendation. So again, just to be thinking about that. That was a project that depended upon the volunteer divers and the barge to get the tires up out of the lake. We got the money to get rid of the tires once they were out, and that's what the forty-eight hundred, probably all together, we probably have seventy-five hundred dollars to dispose of tires. But, you know, you just need to let me know how you wanna go on that one, okay? Boat launch, good news. The final documents from the contractor, I believe, arrived in the mail today from AEDI. I say that, and I've thought of it before, but I do believe this is it. The contractor agreed to a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar deduct in his price so that we can in-house just seal up the cracks in the curbing that need to be sealed. So we're closing that out. I've been working with Carrie on getting our accounting done. You should see that bill in the next set of bills at the boards to the next board meeting, and then we'll get all the reinforcement on it. Switching gears into economic development. I had written a short description of the four-eighty-five B program for you a few weeks ago. And what that does, that gives the village the chance to thank business property owners for investing in their properties by reducing the amount their property taxes get increased. I've heard about this a lot as I've talked to businesses downtown about the Main Street program. They're hesitant to invest because they're worried their assessments are gonna go up if they improve their buildings, which chances are, they will. And so there is a provision in the tax code, if the village wanted to, to basically take whatever new assessment is put on a building and phase it in over, say, five years so that they... you know, kind of gives them a little tax break on whatever increase they would have to pay. It is a little tax break because it's just the village and it's not the school and the town and the county. You know, their increased assessment hits all those, but it's kind of business-friendly. So I wondered if you wanted me to pursue looking into that or what your thinking is?
Are you saying that the tax breaks that we would give them, it only would apply to the village and not to the school or...
Right.
And then now the people that had made some improvements to their properties, storefronts or whatever, now they got some low-interest loans?
Well, this would be... let's take Ray's clients. Ray did his work himself.
Right.
And, you know, paid for all of it. I bet his assessed value's going up when he gets his new assessment if he hasn't gotten it already, would, you know, be my guess because he fixed his building up. If we had that forty-eight... four-eighty-five B program in place, we could say to Ray, let's say your assessment went up ten thousand dollars because you did that work on your building. We're gonna only increase it... the first year, we're gonna take zero of that. So you're gonna pay us the same thing you paid us last year in property taxes. Next year, maybe you'll pay twenty percent of the increase, then forty percent till it builds up, till in the fifth year, he's paying that new assessed values taxes. So it's just a way... it's on the increase. What you're giving up is what the increased amount you would have had because he fixed up his property. So, I mean, it's a totally voluntary thing. I had heard about it at a conference last fall, and then somebody asked a question at our revitalization meeting that reminded me of it. Happened to bump into Jim Gagnon about a week later and chatted with Jim about it, and that's why I brought it to the board's attention.
I think it's something...
I think it's a good idea.
Something we should look at.
I think it's a very good idea.
The property values that go up either way, but if they're gonna invest, then it's gonna help them. You know, it even... is that... now, would that apply to just the downtown area, or is that anywhere in the village?
You can... anywhere in the village. You could make that village-wide. And which would be nice because, you know, as I get calls and people say, "What can the village do for me"? I don't have too much to offer unless it's in the downtown. And, you know, as I said, it's not a lot, but it's something. It is pretty business-friendly, I think. So...
Would it apply... I'm sorry. Would it apply just to the commercial or residents also?
It's commercial property, and what I need to find out is if... I was thinking about this after, would it apply to rental properties? I need to talk to Nikon and talk to Jim Gagnon and, you know, get a little bit more information for you. And then if you, you know, if you decide what you want, we can have Tom remain drafted, because it would have to be a local law.
Get an address from you, address. And I need to get... This whole thing just jogged my memory, which takes a lot of...
It'd be a great program, but it's in the...
Absolutely agree.
Yeah.
I mean, we're trying to dress this place up a little bit. Seem to have some fairly good successes, so...
I'll get some more information, more details for you then, and you can start thinking about what you want in the local law. Uh, the...